Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming to the Brisbane City Council meeting. If you wouldn't mind, please, rising and join us for the flag salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
All right. And just to let everybody know, we had a study session in our large conference room at seven. It was a public meeting. Michelle Salmon was there, but it wasn't on TV. We talked about creating some guidelines for the council rotation for mayor and vice mayor and will be bringing that, you know, what we had discussed to the full council in the near future. So, all right, so adoption of tonight's agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are we going to do a change on the agenda? You were going to do a change on the agenda?
When we get to it, I'll just take it off.
Oh, okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, oral communications. This is to talk about things that are not on tonight's agenda.
I do.
Carolyn Parker. Okay, great. So, the first one is Michelle Salmon.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. There are so many good shows on TV these days, and I watched the Parkside Plan presentation. And I will say that it was not very clear, technically speaking, there was a lot of snow, a lot of breakup of the words and everything. But one of the things that I really wanted to bring up is that I think it's very important that the pub, in this process with the Parkside Plan and everything that's going on, that the public clearly and concisely understands our obligation with the regional housing numbers assignment. Arena, what that means, what it means that we have 273 units that we need to do, what it means to be a very low-income unit, a moderate, a low-income unit, a moderate-income unit, and an above-moderate income unit, and what the qualifications are for determining that, that it's not actually based on income, but it's based on density, and what level of density represents our obligation for very-low-income housing, what level of density represents our obligation and constrictions on low-income, moderate, and above-moderate. And I think that if people, I mean, it was very obvious to me the other night that people were well-informed and educated and everything like that, except in this one area, and the consultant did not go over that at all, even though he clearly explained different options of the plan and why it was being done, but did not explain why we have to look at these levels of density to meet arena, regional housing authority numbers. And I think that the public deserves to have that clarified. I've asked for clarification before. I've tried to clarify it on Facebook, which is really not the form for it to be clarified. I need it, I think it needs to be spelled out. And even some of the people who attended the other night, the next night, I gave them that attachment A from the January 2015 meeting, or attachment C or whatever it was, that spelled out our obligations and our restrictions and the numbers. And I think that people really need to know what that is. And as the council and you're pushing forward this Parkside Plan, I think it's your obligation to make sure that they completely have that information and understand it in the same level of, shall I say, promotion that you're doing with the Parkside Plan.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Carolyn Parker.
Hi, I wanted to talk about two locations that I think are vulnerable for safety. And one of them is the hairline turn at Humboldt. One meeting, it was either the beginning of December or the end of November, Councilman Minour came in very shaken. He had just watched an accident that day where a postman in his, who had just started working, was driving a postal vehicle, and it flipped over. He had some people working at his house. They ran down, they lifted it off of his head. I followed up later to find out what happened, and the, I didn't know whether he had any concussion or not, but he had broken several ribs and he wasn't able to work. So, he lost out on that ability to work. And there was some discussion at the meeting about the things that could be done. And one thing that one of the neighbors who actually was at that particular meeting, I forget his name, he was at the Parkside meeting as well, he saw the whole thing himself. And what he was suggesting is that hairline turn to put in signage similar to, you know, all other hairline turns, you know, around other streets such as Sonoma or, you know, where they have these little signs saying, you know, careful, this is, you know, curvy street, telling people.
Carolyn, just to clarify, we're talking Humboldt and Glen Parkway where it meets?
I think so. Is that where?
Where?
Mr. Minour lives?
That is.
Jamil?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, what I was saying, I'm requesting that, you know, maybe we could put in some signage to help slow people down. He's mentioned it several times. He's seen almost accidents. I think that, you know, if it's a danger, you know, that it's easy to take the turn too fast, you know, the people who live there know, but people who are inexperienced don't.
Yeah.
So, anyway, that's one thing. The second thing is that there's a fire gate that's been put up at the end of Landmark at Guadalupe Canyon Parkway. And the fire gate is just one piece of metal that goes across. When we, when Brookfield originally designed the buildings, they did not have the buildings come up directly to the fire, end of the fire gate. Later, that was changed. You know, you two agreed to it. So, the very expensive houses are sitting right next to the fire gate. I think we can come in and put a different design for the gate, something that's going to not look so vulnerable. I have, you know, there's been conversations at my Altamar planning meetings where people are saying, you know, this looks really vulnerable. It looks as though it's going to be easy for people to see what's going on, to see, you know, what's going. I think it puts the whole ridge, makes the ridge a little more vulnerable. So, I think there's a safety thing that can be easily changed. I don't know what the laws are, but I'd like to see a different gate there, something that doesn't look so easy. And I think someone can just say, oh, I can just drop someone off here. I can, they can go under the gate, you know, we'll swing around, pick you up, you know, after you've done your damage. And, you know, I think that we owe it to our newest residents. You know, they have come in to Landmark, and I think we need to give them as much safety as we're giving the rest of Brisbane. So, these are our new citizens, and I'd like to see the gate changed so that they have, you know, a better chance and feel safer. And that's all I have to say. But I do want to say that I commend, you know, I just want some, the council, you know, to maybe work with Public Works to come up with a couple of solutions that would be elegant, maybe not even very expensive, but could make a huge difference in the safety of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Mr. Mayor?
Clark.
Yeah, a suggestion is to send that to the complete street safety.
Agreed.
Maybe with the, to take a look at that intersection. I know Public Works has put a mirror in there, and a lot of people don't realize that, you know, that mirrors to see what the traffic is coming up, so it is more, you know, suited to the neighborhood.
You're right.
And then on the second thing in regards to the gate, that actually, that road was all the way through, and that was negotiated out to put a gate there. You know, whether that's the appropriate gate or not, I don't know. That's something to maybe also have maybe Complete Streets or Public Works look at that. Clay, if you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, on the second item, I would just, I'll have the city Public Works Director and perhaps Fire Department take a look at that.
And I would also suggest that maybe the Police Department confer on that, because I have heard from a number of residents up at the ridge, especially with the recent attempted burglary, that they are concerned about that entrance off of Guadalupe being an easy target for people to park on Guadalupe, you know, going on foot, you know, potentially burglarize homes and then leave. So, if there's, you know, there's been suggestions from the public to make that gate, like Carolyn said, less flimsy, you know, to make it so that it's somehow an impediment to getting away on foot. But at the same time, it has to allow the emergency access. So, I think, you know, there's the complete streets issue, but I think also the public, you know, safety.
We'll look at it at staff level.
Great.
Yeah, no, that sounds good. And Chief, so the person that, the mail carrier, they were okay from that accident?
Can you hear me? Oh, yes. They, he does sustain a concussion and some broken ribs, so I, as I'm aware, I think he's back to work, but he was injured, yes.
Okay, all right. And then, I made the parking on Guadalupe, that's prohibited, isn't it?
Yes, it is prohibited on Guadalupe. It doesn't, I mean, people can still park there, right, and access that roadway, yes, but it is prohibited, and there's no parking.
Okay.
And for the chief, the accident with the mail truck, was that determined to be speed-related or just unfamiliarity with the roads?
It appeared he took the turn much too wide and wasn't, because he wasn't familiar with the roadway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, let's go on to new business. Actually, excuse me, the consent calendar. We have the minutes of December 8th and the 17th.
Move adoption of the consent calendar?
So, I had, I'd like to remove, I guess, there was a, first of all, there was, I think we have, we have some changes that I had suggested typographical to the December 17th meeting minutes, but I don't see all of them, so I'll remove item B.
Okay. So, Clark, you're going to make a motion for item A. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Okay.
Laurie?
Item B is the December 17th minutes. As we have the highlighted version in front of us, that there's just some wording missing on the moment of silence on page one, but then also on page four, there's just a small type of typographical issue, the word grant money doesn't have the G, and I don't think that was in the changes that were before us.
Yeah, I did get that change, and I printed out the wrong page in front of you, but I did make that change, so I just added the T to, or put the G in front of it.
Well, I see it is there, but it's just not highlighted. Okay.
Yeah, so small, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any?
So, with those typographical changes, we'll make a motion to approve?
Yes.
I'll, a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay, new business, consider adoption of resolution number 2016-03, joining in the joint exercise of powers agreement to establish the Peninsula Clean Energy Authority in San Mateo County, appoint a director and alternate, and an alternate director to the Board of Directors of the Joint Powers Agency, and introduce ordinance number 605 authorizing implementation of a community choice aggregation program in the city of Brisbane. Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. About a week ago or so, you had a very, very thorough presentation concerning the merits and the mechanics of this program. We have the representative from the county who is here tonight to answer any questions concerning those, if the council has any questions about that. So, I won't go into that, into those, into the mechanics of the program or the, or how it works. What's before you tonight is a policy decision with respect to whether or not this council wants to join the Peninsula Clean Energy Authority. And so, before you is a resolution that would authorize the city to join that. That resolution also needs to include the name of the director who will be a part of the, on the board, and then also an alternate director. So, those two actions need to be included if you adopt the resolution. The other action item before you tonight is ordinance number 605, and that essentially implements the program in the city of Brisbane. It's a requirement under the Public Utilities Code that that ordinance be adopted so that it sort of puts into play and enables residents within the city to be a part of this program and be able to, essentially, if they don't want to be a part of the program, they would opt out. The, as part of the, part of the joint powers agreement, there are a number of provisions in there concerning the voting requirements in terms of how things happen. Again, last week, that was explained in some detail by the county representative, but I'd be glad to go over those if there's any questions about it. But I think the, the policy issue is the big, the big decision, and these are simply implementing documents if the council wants to go in that way. If there's any questions concerning the resolution or the ordinance, however, I'll be glad to answer those questions.
All right. Are there any questions for Michael? Seems like you had a pretty thorough workshop last time we were at the dais. Like, we're all in agreement with moving forward, so we've got three items before us.
What I'd, I'd like to hear from staff is if they have a recommendation for whether staff or a council member would be better served by being the member of the Board of Directors and a voting member of this board.
As an alternate.
And the alternate, but whether, because we have the choice of appointing either an elected or a staff member.
For the alternate position. I think, I think the.
Correct. It is, the, the regular director is to be an elected official, but the alternate may be a, a non-elected official. And quite honestly, I defer to Mr. Holstein with respect to that recommendation. Perhaps there's some other items that I can either answer, or if there's members of the public to be heard, we can get to that, and then when Mr. Holstein gets back, maybe he can weigh in on that. I think he would be in a better position than I would to make that recommendation.
All right, so are there any other questions? Okay, so we can open it up to the public if anyone wants to speak on it. All right, so while we're waiting for Clay, so Lori, can you just kind of explain a little bit about how you've been representing the city in your role trying to move this forward through the different cities in the county?
Sure, so I'm currently serving on the Advisory Committee, which has been basically over the last almost year, we've been looking at all the issues that would go into creating a JPA, and we've been hearing from people who were involved in the models in Marin and Sonoma. And at this point, we're looking at implementation guidelines and implementation, implementation plan. And so, the, you know, I think because of what I've worked on so far, you know, I would be happy to continue serving on the JPA. You know, I'm very excited about the program and looking forward to seeing the benefits that it can offer to all the residents in the county. So, I think there's probably a very strong chance that all the cities in the county will approve it and become members. And most, I believe most of the people who are on the Advisory Committee plan to continue serving on the JPA for sense of continuity.
Yeah, no, that totally makes sense. You did have your question, so we can ask it.
So, my question was, and I guess I misread it, but as far as the city staff wanting to participate as the alternate member of the Board of Directors, is there a recommendation from the staff?
Well, my, I find it actually rather odd that you would have a staff person on this, and I also find it odd that you would have as an alternate. But that notwithstanding, my recommendation is to be another council person.
Okay.
All right. So, I'd make a recommendation that, to appoint Lori as the director, and, but who else?
Is anybody else interested in?
Yeah.
I would be interested in it, but again, as an alternate.
As an alternate? You want to be, okay.
I would support Lori as director.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion to appoint Lori as the director and Terry as the alternate director.
Okay. And can we continue, we do all three, or should we do them separately, Michael?
The resolution, if you introduce the resolution and include within that the director and the alternate, that would be one action, then I would do a separate action with respect to the ordinance. And by, and the ordinance will have to come back for a second reading on the February 18th, but the, the really critical decision to be made before February 29th is the adoption of the resolution.
Okay, so then the motion would be to adopt the resolution, which would appoint Lori as the director and Terry as the backup director.
Got to start that first, and then, and then move forward with the director and alternate, so.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we've got a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. Okay, so who wants to do ordinance number 605? Madison?
I'd like to introduce ordinance 605 authorizing, authorizing.
You just caught me up.
Implementation of a community choice aggregation program in the city of Brisbane.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Excellent, well, thank you.
All righty, thank you, Kirsten. See you later. Okay, so item number B is, I was at the roundtable meeting last night, we had before the roundtable a resolution for all the cities to, to put forth a resolution that would show cooperation of the cities working with the FA. The roundtable felt that it needed more teeth in the resolution, and so they decided to postpone moving forward with the resolution, which would also be the resolution that would go to all the cities. So, we're going to have to wait for another roundtable meeting before that comes before us. So, I will just pull this off the agenda and put it back on there when the appropriate time.
And Cliff, may I ask, on your next meeting of the, that that would be possible, is that in a quarterly meeting?
It's every other month.
Okay, so in a couple of months.
In a couple of months, yes. Next up is item C, consider adoption of resolution number 2016-05 to symbolically ban hydro, hydraulic fracking or fracturing, and sign onto a statewide coalition Californians against fracking's letter, fracking's letter, to Governor Brown to encourage the state to ban fracking in California. Karen, you are the person to give the staff report.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, the item before you has been brought to you from the Open Space and Ecology Committee. In July, we, the committee discussed asking the council to ban fracking in the city of Brisbane and to oppose and to send a letter to the state. And the ban in Brisbane would be symbolic in nature because we don't expect that fracking operations would come here, but still thought it was important to do so. The, a letter was written and sent to council in November, and as the mayor has mentioned, there is a resolution that staff is proposing backed by the Open Space and Ecology Committee, and there's, and a letter to the governor that a number of officials have signed on to. Management analyst Natalie Escoffier is here to explain a little bit more about why the Open Space and Ecology Committee would like to recommend that we ban fracking.
So, in case you're not familiar, I was just going to go over a few pointers on what's the issue with fracking. Fracking has several negative impacts, not only on human health, but also on environmental health. It uses millions of gallons of water for the operations, which render them unusable after use. It contaminates local water sources and renders them undrinkable and uninhabitable for wildlife in the areas surrounding fracking operations. Toxic air pollutants that result from these operations create smog in areas and exacerbate issues such as asthma. Residents in neighbors near fracking operations have been linked to increased rates of cancer and birth defects. And continuing to extract natural gas and oil in this manner will make it difficult for us to reach the state's greenhouse gas emissions, or their goals. Californians Against Fracking is a coalition of environmental justice, business, health, agriculture, and political organizations, and that their goal is to win a statewide ban on fracking in California. Californians Against Fracking goals are to ask Governor Brown to ban fracking, cease oil, gas extraction near areas of sensitive receptors, and phase out natural gas and oil extractions in the state. Approximately 80 supervisors, council members, and mayors have signed the letter drafted for elected officials, and as Karen mentioned, there are several different letters that other organizations have signed on to, such as faith, health professionals, elected officials, again, farmers and chefs, as well as individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have questions for staff?
No, I, I think it, I like the recommendation myself, because, you know, I've read some of the, the stuff that, you know, be, not, not just from our report here, but, you know, some of the things that have happened with fracking and, while I find it innovative and stuff like that, I just, you know, Karen, I know you can attest to this from an engineering point of view, that, you know, whenever you do something on one end, it, there's, there's always a trade-off on the other end, and it really hasn't been explored. I think when we're inducing high-pressure water, clean water mixed with chemicals that is not, you know, subject, it's just a bad recipe for something to happen, you know, for if not immediate in the future.
Absolutely.
You know, and I think that we do too much sometimes, and we induce things and don't know what the results are, and then, you know, 50 years later, you find out that this whole place is just, it has to be abandoned because the toxics that were used back then, we discovered through, you know.
Nobody can drink the water.
Public Information Act, that, yeah, that, you know, that it has gone into the, you know, the.
Aquifer.
The aquifer and stuff like that, and I just can't see how that it can't end up in the aquifer when you're doing that, you know? So, I think kudos to the Open Space and Ecology Committee. I see Barbara's here, and Michelle had left for recommending this to us and giving us the data, so thank you for that. Thank you, staff, too, so.
So, I am completely in agreement with this as well. I think it aligns with our. I think it aligns with our goals of reducing greenhouse gas emissions to, you know, by, you know, basically saying that we're not going to rely on this form of fuel and fossil fuels, so that we'll look at alternate sources of energy instead. And I do have a suggestion to make it stronger. I noticed that many individual council members and other government officials had signed on to the letter. So I would suggest that it be signed by all of us, so that, you know, when, in the future, it gets counted of how many council members have signed on to it, it's five, not one.
Absolutely.
That was, that was going to be my, my comment also, so that it, it was signed by all of us, or at least, you know, by approval of all of us with perhaps just the mayor's signature, but yes.
So all our names will show up on the list in the future as supporting this?
Yeah, I think we should all sign it. Yeah.
Do you want to say anything?
I mean, I'm in agreement. I was actually really glad to learn more about this, and it amazed me that practices like this go on with such a high, I mean, so many high costs that the community is, is paying. And to me, there's no way that I can see benefits outweighing that at all. And so, you know, I think that we, as a city, are trying to really focus on the environment and being progressive, and I think, you know, even though we're not a great site for something like this, that we can go ahead and support our Open Space and Ecology Commission and sign this as, you know, symbolically, that that's great in moving us forward with our goals. So I'm, I'm really excited to include my name on this.
All right.
So I'd like, I would like to make a motion to introduce resolution number 2016-05 as amended to add all of our signatures.
I would second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, Barbara, and your colleagues. Okay, so, on to staff reports, city manager's report.
Just a reminder that we do have the workshops coming up on the coyotes at the end of the month, that we still get phone calls about that from time to time, and.
What's it on?
Coyotes.
Oh.
Yeah, we'll have the gentleman from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to present that night. And so it'll be the 23rd.
February 23rd and March 5th.
And March 5th, and we did put notice in our most new, recent newsletter.
Can you, can you speak to what is going to be specifically discussed, so, about how to, is it gonna focus on what happens when you encounter a coyote, or signs that there's been a coyote?
It will, it will deal with all that, you know, the, when you encounter a coyote, things to do to try to not provide a appetite for coyotes to come, so to speak. And just a general awareness of what to do with, with coyotes. We've, we've just been getting a lot more reports from people in town and, and people seeing them and walking their dogs and having concerns about the interaction. So the guy from the, from the State Fish and Wildlife is pretty well-versed, and he will be able to kind of give people some pointers, as well as some suggestions on, you know, as a community, what we need to do, which is essentially not create as much of an app, or, I think, you know, the fact that people leave food out for animals, cats, dogs, whatever, can become a, a problem for a reason why coyotes will be in the area.
I'm sorry, Clay, is that State Fish and Game?
No, it's, it's State, but it's called Fish and Wildlife now. It used to be called State Game, State Fish and Game.
Oh, okay. Now they go with the US Fish and Wildlife kind of line?
That's why I get, takes, it takes me time to kind of slow down to remember that, but that, it's, it's a state of California Fish and Wildlife.
Okay.
So, so just to reiterate, I attended a conference recently where I, I heard part of the presentation, and it was actually very good on how to avoid inappropriate interaction between wildlife and, because of our urban interface and the mountain being so, so, so close. So I think even if it's not just a concern on coyotes, I think the general theme of it will work well for skunks, raccoons, and other critters that we don't want to interrupt or really interface with on a daily basis. And I think it'd be a very good thing for our citizens to come down and, and learn more about it, so that it takes some of the fear out of the encounters that may happen and, and reduces the stress on both the people and the animals.
Definitely. Anything else, Clay?
That's all I've got.
All right. Council members, any committees or boards that you attended, subcommittee meetings?
I'll start if you'd like.
Why don't you start?
I attended the CCAG subcommittee meeting last night on water issues, which deals with, well, is, is a technical group that is an advisory group working on stormwater, sea level rise, water drought, and pollution control. We're still in the beginning phases of coming up with a recommendation to the full CCAG board on what kind of overlaying jurisdiction and funding mechanisms can be possible to increase our effectiveness on the, mostly on the flooding and the water issues. And so it was very interesting, and we looked at management and, and styles of governments that may work in our, in our county and with the 22 cities, and it's being funded, the seed money for the initial group study is being also funded by the county of San Mateo.
Did you get a chance to go to that LPMG meeting, or?
No, I did not make that. I got stuck in traffic and turned around between, oh, and I also attended, the day of the other meeting, the railroad, high-speed rail meeting, I attended a airport land use meeting. And that was interesting in that the airport land use plan that we have adopted for the three airports here in the county, we had an application from Oracle to build a high school within two miles of one of their runways. And so that's in the area of influence and under state guidelines, high schools, public schools are not recommended to be within that area. And it turns out that when we adopted a new airport land use, or CLUP, they did not put that recommendation into ours. And so while there was not authority to disallow the private high school, the committee felt it was a big enough risk to put the school there, that we're sending it back for more information, because it is under state guidelines to not have a school in that area. So it was interesting to see how the, the airport land use overlay is affecting proposed plans at that level.
All right, so what city?
It's in San Carlos for the San Carlos Airport. It's at, on Oracle's campus, that they want to do a charter Oracle Tech High School.
Oh, that's right, that's the D-Tech school, high school?
Could be. I didn't get the name, I don't recall the name of the high school, but it's approximately 550 students that would be in the airport overflight.
And it's private, not, not public?
I believe it is a private school because they are saying that it's a charter school, so they aren't intending to get money from the state, which takes it off some of the state regulatory issues. But they're also saying that in their initial plan, that if they accept students, that they would give preference to some of the low-income students in San Carlos, and if they do that, they would actually get funding from the state. So it becomes a gray area, whether it is.
Interesting.
State or not state, and whether we had any authority to say it's not a compatible land use.
Okay. All right, thank you for that.
But it, it had a lot of influence with the, from the pilots association came and talked about it because they did feel that it was too close for, whether there was a catastrophic failure for, on a takeoff or a landing, and also for the pollution and the noise and the distraction of overflights in that area. So some of the same stuff we're dealing with at, at the roundtable level.
Yes. Madison, you haven't, have you had any subcommittee meetings yet?
Not yet.
All right, we're having one Tuesday.
We're having one on Tuesday.
Tuesday night.
Quite excited.
Horrible housing.
Six o'clock.
All right. Lori, anything?
No subcommittee meetings to report on it this time.
Clara, anything? All right. Yeah, I did have a heart board meeting. We're in the process of hiring a new executive director. The board, or the organization is a little bit adrift right now, trying to find its way. Haven't had a full-time executive director for quite a few months, but we'll see what happens. Let's see, roundtable meeting was last night, went two hours and, I don't know, a little over two and a half hours last night. Very heated, a lot of frustrated folks, mostly outside of the county. You know, we got a lot of folks from Santa Clara County, from the Palo Alto area, and then Santa Cruz County, from the Santa Cruz area because of a shift in the procedure that used to go over an area that didn't have very many people, and now it's going over an area that is right over Santa Cruz City and Capitola, so they're not, not very happy. However, their, their flights are a lot higher than, than ours, so chances are, we'd probably be, you know, happy if we got their problem than the ones that we're dealing with, because our flights are much lower. But anyways, also, I was elected to be chair again. This will be my last year with the FAA's initiative, which is really the, the best hope, I think, for us to, to get some real change. The FAA has said, yes, we want to collaborate with you, and hopefully they are sincere about it, and, and we can get something going. And then, let's see, so I, I gave, or I took Peter Grace's letter and, and did some massaging of it just to, to give it more focus, and so it's, it's before you. One of the things that was pointed out to me, Patrick's in the audience, and he was at the roundtable meeting last night, and said, you know, you don't have any footnotes of, you know, to describe where you, you got your, your data. It's like, okay, you know, that, that is very important. And so if the theme of the letter works for you, you know, I'd like to be able to just add that information and then, and then send it off.
Yeah, actually, that was my comment, too, that, you know, what's, what's the source of the data? And then I saw on the back it says attached is the data, so we didn't have the data before us, but I want to make sure that if there's data, that it's clear where it's coming from, so that, you know, it's not controverted. Peter Grace did also contact me and send me a draft of a, a potential rewrite of the letter, and I spoke with him about it yesterday, and he said that he thought it, it could be a little less wordy and that it, it shouldn't contain actually much data that it, because there's already been a letter sent by him on behalf of, you know, the community, and so this is just to reiterate that. So he kind of distilled it a little bit more. You know, I, I appreciate his effort, you know, I think, you know, I don't want to delay things too much, you know, I, I'm comfortable with the letter as it is, but I just want to put that out there, that he also did provide a, a potential rewrite.
That is, that is true.
You know, I think you should ask Peter for a copy of the letter that he sent, you know, because, you know, one of the things I know we had discussed, you know, at the last meeting, and I had discussed with Peter that, you know, we shouldn't assume that Glenn Martin understands the acronyms and terminology here, because he may not, you know, even though he's a regional director, so I, I don't know. Does he?
He, he does.
He does, okay.
He does.
All right, if, if, if you're sure of that.
Oh, I am absolutely sure.
If that's the case, then, yeah, I'd rather add the references and stuff like that to it, because, because it is educational, and, you know, it is, I think, adding to what was sent from the citizens, you know, coming from us, you know, that, hey, you guys follow procedure, things are better. If you vary in one spot, it compounds, compounds the problem, so, you know, and I think that's the message that we're conveying here, so.
Yeah. And I did have a point of clarification, so I received an email from Jay Patel, a Brisbane resident, and he had some concerns about that one-mile radius, which is a reference in the letter, but you had talked about it before. And he noted that the one-mile refer, one-mile radius is, you know, pretty much centered over central Brisbane, and it doesn't even include the ridge. So, and I think, I think that's, that's kind of, that's a big issue, because a lot of the noise is happening over the ridge, and if that data isn't included in, you know, what's being studied, I think that is a little troubling. I think that, you know, when, when we heard the, your presentation the first time, I kind of assumed that one-mile radius was from like the outside of our borders, not just from the center of our town, because our town is more than one mile wide, you know, so I think it needs to be widened to make sure we're capturing at least the residential neighborhoods that are being impacted.
Did they ever put that second noise monitor up there? Remember?
They did, it was, it was temporary, and they took it away, and, and, yeah, and so I saw some of that, the.
We got a wonderful report today. I'll, I'll shoot it out to the rest of the council. It is, it is a very wonkish report, I would say. So if you're, if you want to try to translate it, you're gonna have to spend some time reading it. I, I'll try to read it myself tomorrow.
Yeah, you know, in regards to that, that one-mile radius that, you know, that Mr. Patel had, had mentioned, yeah, so I, and he captured that from our website. So, yeah, we should, if we're gonna have something on our website, it really should include all of, of Brisbane. The, when I gave the presentation, though, it was in regards to this, the stick waypoint, and for, you know, well, asking that the air traffic controllers let the, the planes fly to that waypoint, and, and we were trying to capture data that was in a quarter-mile radius around that waypoint. So it didn't, it didn't really refer to the mile radius around the town. So, so I, yeah, so I did tell Mr. Patel that I would look into that, and I, I think if we can expand the entire residential area of Brisbane that we're capturing that, and that, that is an area that we should avoid having planes fly over, then that respects the whole, the whole city.
So I also talked with Peter Grace last week, and I did not see a copy of the draft letter that is, the, I mean, I don't have a copy of the draft letter that I think you might have.
Yeah, I was handed a copy of it at another meeting.
Oh, Peter Grace's letter?
Peter's, he had said that he provided it to each of us, but.
I, I didn't see it until, I got it last night from, from Patrick at, at the meeting. I know Peter's here in the audience, too.
He is here, and, but this is council matters, so I didn't know if we wanted to invite Peter up at all, or if we wanted to discuss it, or the, his revisions or his ideas. I did, when I, I talked with him, I did look at what he had submitted, and I think that while I'm happy to, to put my name on a letter that is supporting what the residents and what you feel is, is best, and what, to support what the residents' letter said, I do think that it needs to be a very short, concise, not really naming all the points and giving data references, because I think you lose someone in the data if we're trying to send a letter of support for a letter that already has gone out, and that we support it and we're on board with it. I think it should be a very, you know, strong, brief, concise, and not try to put everything in that letter again, because we're just trying to incorporate it by reference and say, look, this came, we can attach the letter for all those other points. And, and so that would be my recommendation, but whatever.
Yeah, no, I, you know.
I got a suggestion.
Well, let me just, you know, Peter, Peter.
Whatever you feel.
Peter had put forth that, that original letter, and so. Peter had put forth that, that original letter, and so I just took the information from that original letter and then made this letter, so to make it more simple, I mean, I, you know, I'm fine with, you know, with, with doing that.
Yeah, however you feel, I'm, I'm happy supporting.
I was just trying to respect the letter that Peter had given us, so that, that's why, this is what you see here.
Yeah, the two-week-ago letter.
Yeah.
What I suggest is, is we punt at the staff and let them draft something that's, you know, appropriate, and then, then you can edit it from there, and let's utilize them.
I, I would normally take the bait, but I mean, I think Glenn Martin's so personally involved in this that I would.
Well, you're good tonight.
Redraft.
No, I, I mean, I'll, let, let me talk with Peter about it, and we'll, we'll work something out.
Work with Peter.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna throw in my two cents before, before we move on. I met with Peter twice, found it, I found it really informational, just because there's only so much that we can focus on at a council meeting, and when we had the presentation that you gave, I found that to be really informational as well, and then Peter continued to enlighten me, so I just found that meeting to be, to be really great, and so I actually saw, I think, a version of this letter, and then I also saw a, a different version that I think you saw, that is a little bit more concise, that is in support of another letter that's already been sent, which I think is a great idea as well. However, if we do go with this letter, I would challenge even just beyond adding in the footnotes to actually attach the data directly to the letter, and to highlight where these figures are coming from, so it doesn't take somebody too much time to kind of go through that, to find that, and I don't want to just put it in the footnotes and hope that they will go ahead, like Glenn will go ahead and access that, so if we can just make it as clear as possible, but again, I'm, I'm with the same kind of consensus as what I've heard from you guys tonight, I'm, I'm okay with either letter with those, you know, recommendations, so.
All right, thank you, Madison.
Maybe you can do a, a two-part, a two-part letter, too, you know, I mean, where one is the cover page of, you know, this is what our city council supports, and see, please read the following information, you know, keeping it.
An executive summary.
All right, I, I will, I will take those recommendations to heart and come up with something. All right, thank you.
Should have punted.
I should.
Do we want to bring?
Peter, did you, did you want us?
Say any words? Since you made it down here.
Might as well.
Yeah, I was in Tucson this morning. Thanks a lot for giving the opportunity to speak. I would like to bring you up to date on what I've done with the letter. We've sent it to the FAA, and it's been received by them. I've gone to Senator Hill's office, I spoke with his chief of staff, Mark Hirschman, who's today, and he will put the letter, the Concerned Citizens of Letter, on his desk, you know, later next week. He is fully in support of, he wouldn't have put it on his desk unless he felt it was worthwhile supporting. Last week, I went to go and see Tissier, and spoke with her department, and went through the presentation as well, and she was out last week, will be in this week, and the person will support our letter, and I believe will send a letter. A Brisbane resident was in Washington DC last week, and showed the letter to drop the letter off at Feinstein's office, and we hope to set up a meeting this week, or this coming week, Feinstein's office. So I implore the council to go and support, get, give us the port, the Concerned Citizens of Brisbane letter, make it the letter really brief, succinct, and to the point, and march along with Senator Hill, Tissier, and Senator Feinstein. And please don't reiterate the letter that's been sent to you, you know, what we're looking for is a short, brief letter of support. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Okay, so, written communications, we have a few items here. Okay, so there was the, the survey request for the, the Gordon Bill 1362 in regards to, I guess, reducing the size of, of these, these districts, you want to talk a little bit about that, Clara?
Yeah, that's my understanding of the bills, basically the substance of the bill, and I believe Bob Maynard came here at the last meeting recommending that, that the council not support that, so Assemblyman Gordon did put out a survey, unfortunately, it's one of those prompt surveys, so I couldn't, can't get into it, other than, you know, we've got, we have an opportunity to respond to it, and so I'm kind of looking for direction from the council as to how you want to proceed with that, whether you want the mayor to do it, I, I could do it, or, you know, assuming that that's the position that the council wants to take, that not to support reducing the size of the board.
Anybody have any questions about that?
Yeah, I, I think I would like to support what Bob was saying.
Yeah.
Because he's really on top of it, and he's been our representative for a long time, so I'd like to see from a state level that they not necessarily start diddling with it, you know, on doing things that, you know, they think that, well, this will be good, without really understanding.
Yes, it seems like more of a blanket type of approach, and not really looking at the, the districts that are really doing good work, and granted, yes, we did have some issues with some embolism, you know, but that was, you know, they, they worked through that, but the work itself is good, and, you know, keeping us safe from mosquito-borne diseases, so, yeah.
Instead of doing a survey, maybe write a letter and submit it as the survey.
So that's something that we can do, you know, work with Bob Maynard to come up with a, a letter of opposing this, this bill.
I would think that it makes sense for us, you know, it sounds like a very cumbersome board when you look at, that it's got as many members as it does, but when you find the reason because of the funding and the 22 cities involved, it's the same as the CCAG model, and sometimes you need to have cumbersome to give everyone a seat at the table, and to make sure that their, their needs are being met in their communities, so I would recommend that the mayor work with staff to, to write a letter opposing Senate Bill 1362, or Assembly Bill 1362. And I know we can't take a formal action under this, but I would support the mayor working to draft with staff that.
Okay, good, all right.
And, and respond to the survey?
Sure.
Yes, you can. All right. Okay, so there are some vacancies, I guess, for some of the, some of the committees that report to CCAG. So the CMEQ, Congestion Management Environmental Quality Committee, and then there's a Legislative Committee. So I, I had served on the CMAC a couple years ago, is actually a really good subcommittee or committee that recommends some of the, the main things that CCAG deals with, but it is during the day, like at three o'clock in the middle of the week, it's a tough one to get to, so anyways, if anyone is interested, you can reach out to Mary Ann Nyheart, who is the current chair.
One, one thing that I, I would like to also mention is that on the Airport Land Use Committee, when we had the meeting, unexpectedly, I chaired the meeting because the other, the chair was not available, and there was a question of appointing another member from the Airport Roundtable Committee, Subcommittee, or excuse me, the Airport Land Use Committee, to a seat at the roundtable. I was nominated and seconded, and then a procedure was brought up by a member from South San Francisco that said that they didn't think it would be in the best interest to have Brisbane or any city represented by two seats, and so as a procedural vote, they did appoint the member from, that represents the airport, to the roundtable, because they felt it would be a conflict to have two members on the airport committee.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to, I had support of the committee, but then because of the procedural, we didn't have legal with us, because no one expected this issue to come up, so we didn't have a real legal interpretation, so I withdrew my name to keep from having that appearance of undue influence.
Yes, for sure, I mean, no, no city should have really, uh, two votes at the table. Okay, so, let's see.
Except for Brisbane.
I was, I, I was trying, you know, I was trying.
All right, so we did have, I, I felt a really successful workshop on the priority-based budgeting, I think all council members, like, really just went at it and, and came up with, with excellent suggestions, you know, so, but we didn't get through all of the things that we needed to. So staff is considering February 20th for the next council workshop on priority-based budgeting, so that they can at least get us through this part of it, and then sometime down the line, I guess we'll, we'll, we'll try and finalize it, but we, we won't be finalizing it prior to adopting the budget later in the year.
Yeah, the, the next workshop will focus primarily on looking at the performance indicators for the results that you, you worked on and drafted last time, and in terms of the date, Lori's not available on the 20th, but she indicated you're, she's available on the 21st or the weekend of March 5th and 6th.
Why is it that we can't schedule this during the week?
There's no reason, that's your call, I mean, it's just a matter of, if we want to go to some site off, off, off campus, off the, out of City Hall, I suppose we could get a, a room at one of the hotels during a weeknight.
I'm, I'm also not clear on why we would need to go off-site when we have perfectly good facilities here.
I know, I, you know, I think the, the first one was kind of a, I think, a nice gathering for us to, to work together off-site, but, yeah, I think for the future meetings, I, you know, it's probably not really necessary.
The only logistical problem is the planning commission is pretty busy, and you're, and with your other commissions, I mean, we don't have a lot of nights to work with. Yeah, Monday, Mondays, and I know Clark has indicated Mondays aren't good for him, so Tuesday the 16th, or Tuesday the 23rd?
I like Sunday the 21st.
It makes it very difficult when, when, you know, you try to get time to recharge and to come look at things freshly, and I, I would, I would rather not encumber my weekends with, with that kind of event, I would rather try to find a schedule date that, that works during the week, in the evenings, personally, but if it's the council's pleasure.
What were the dates during the week that you proposed?
Well, essentially Tuesdays, now if you're open to going to something like Mission Blue, and that, we have the small room up there, we could use that almost any night of the week.
Yeah. I think that's also like a nice change of place.
The 16th or the 23rd, the Tuesdays would work for me, in theory, if they work for other council members.
Works for me.
Me, too.
Uh, let's see, the 23rd, we do have the Coyote meeting.
Yeah.
I'd rather do the 23rd, because we have a council meeting on the 18th, I don't like doing the.
Well, that would mean that, that we would not be able to attend the Coyote meeting, but I'm sure we could get something, are they going to be broadcasting that?
Well, there's going to be two of them, yeah, and we will, I, I believe we'll try to broadcast that, but there'll be a Saturday, one March 5th also.
What time are you guys projecting, projecting, or determining this meeting will start, our, our meeting?
What is the earliest that you can attend, Lori?
Seven.
Seven o'clock? Okay.
You okay with seven, Manners?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like five or five.
Okay, so.
Like, I can't make it that early.
Okay.
Seven's good.
So seven o'clock.
So the 7:00 PM on?
Tuesday, which Tuesday is?
16th.
Mar.
Or the 23rd.
The 23rd.
He said 23rd.
February.
23rd.
Yeah, because.
Okay, so we're not doing the 16th, then?
Because we have a council meeting on the 18th.
Okay.
That's what Clark had said.
Okay, so the 23rd, all right.
Kind of spread it out.
So this, the council chambers will be used, so we could go up to Mission Blue?
Okay.
As long as you have food.
We will have food for you, we'll have snacks for you.
Yeah, no, I think that'd be good.
Okay, we'll, we'll verify that the room is available.
Okay, it's going to be at seven o'clock.
We could always do it at the conference room in, in.
What's the meeting that night for, what other meetings going on that night, just?
On the 23rd?
Coyote.
Coyote meeting's in here.
Oh.
But we, we have the conference room here at City Hall, or we will look at Mission Blue and see if that, the conference room is also available.
Okay.
Okay.
And what time's the Coyote meeting? Seven?
Um, seven or 7:30, something like that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and I'm sorry, would you repeat what you thought that our priority, our budget discussions would be on what subject?
So you, you have come up with the, what is now five goals or results, and so the next step is to go through and have a discussion about what the performance measures are for those?
Performance measures, okay, that, that was the word I was looking for.
We didn't edit, though, each, I think there was there, were there some that we didn't get to looking at?
Well, well, I think you went through all of them, but we'll bring those back with the re-editing, and Stuart actually has come up with kind of a better way to visualize them, so we'll bring that back to you, too, so we'll confirm that and then get on to the performance measures.
Perfect, yeah.
No, I just realized, well, my parents are staying with me that night, and they're leaving the next morning, so.
Well, we could have it at Mission Blue, that'd be close to home.
They could watch their kids.
Yeah, it's just that one night out of the entire time they're here that they're going to be staying with me, so I feel kind of guilty about it.
Bring them to the meeting, enjoy it.
Mark, you want to push it to March 1st? That's, that's the following Tuesday.
Okay, let's take a pick.
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, then we can push it to earlier, to the 16th, then, and just have two meetings in one week.
March 8th?
Or March 8th. Everybody, everybody here March 8th?
Hold on, hold on, let me check.
Am I here March 8th?
Too far out.
Is it?
I'm here March 8th.
March 8th works?
As of now, I mean, yeah.
And I will let the council know now that I'm probably, well, 99% sure I will not be making the March 31st council meeting if we are having that, it is the third meeting of the month.
We don't have, we don't have a council meeting.
We only have council meetings twice a month.
Well, but we've been scheduling them more often, so it, it's, it was on mine as a, as a.
Place holder.
Possible.
I wouldn't be here for that, either.
Okay.
I'm on spring break.
Okay, so, March 8th?
I should do that, too.
Everybody good with March 8th?
Thank you.
Yeah, no, March 8th.
That'd be better, thank you.
March 8th.
And as a seven o'clock start?
Yeah, 7:00 PM.
March 8th, 7:00 PM, okay. All right, good.
And then that might mean that this room is available if we wanted to set it up in this room. Possible.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, oral communications number two, anybody want to talk about something that we haven't already talked about? All right, so I'll take.
We had a hand, we had a hand.
Before we do that, oh.
Yeah, yeah.
I had just submitted a letter on the 29th about airport noise, and I just wanted to see if council had received that.
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to thank Terry for removing the jinx. As much as we tried to stretch this meeting out, I think we removed the drinks.
Good.
All right, so.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you. Aye, all right, thank you very much.